I'd like to all to agree here with you, 25 committee of the whole meeting to order please. Roll call.
Mike.
Out on the line.
Tim, Larry.
Here.
Amber.
Here.
Daniel.
Here.
Misty.
Here.
Please rise with pledging allegiance.
Thank you just for the lighting of the Chinese state of America. This is our office for which it's famous. Nation, I'm not being loud in the end of this all may be delivered everything in justice.
Next, I would seek approval of the agenda, please.
I'll make a.
Make a question to approve.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Amber.
Uh, yes.
Misty.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Next, I seek approval of the January 7th committee of the whole minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Larry.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Misty.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
Next, we have comments from citizens and please be as brief as possible, but step up to the podium as you desire, please.
Bill Hudson, nine seven four Harmon. I just want to thank the city of Tonny Town for fixing the entrance from four twelve to Harmon Road. That is a wonderful improvement, so thank you.
What is?
Nick Wagner, four oh nine, Penzo. Uh, thank you, folks. Uh, I realize normally in public comments, there's not a lot of documents presented, but I've got some here that I'd like to leave with you. I'll leave them with Miss Bartamani who can make copies for, as anybody wants them. Referencing, uh, last meeting, the, uh, mayor indicated that something to the effect that you were overwhelmed by FOIs. And, um, I requested the FOI logs for the city as well as the police department. In her, um, state of the city address, she said the police and I verified over eight hundred and forty FOIs were handled by your police office. Um, hundred and twenty-nine was handled by the city during the same time period for the twelve months of, uh, last year. However, the mayor also made comments regarding an IT contractor after I left, uh, named Gregory Lloyd. Now, that alarmed me for various reasons I'll try to explain. In late October, I requested by FOI, uh, a number of emails and was told that emails were non-recovable. And, um, I later, uh, requested an audit log from your server, which indicated that not to be true, as well as, uh, calling the IT vendor that had been under contract with the city since, uh, twenty-two in the name of Telecom. They dispelled the fact that, uh, they were recoverable. And in fact, uh, Mr. Lloyd was an employee at that time of that company. So I've got a couple of emails here to verify what I was told and, um, what I discovered. The, um, the city later, um, at the advice, I guess, of their IT administrator as, uh, had been explained by their city attorney to me, being one Greg Lloyd, um, that, um, these were unrecoverable. However, uh, some IT people that I've used over the years, uh, will ask for the OST files, which I presume that's, uh, the laborious task that the, uh, city administrative assistant or whatever, uh, Jamie's title is, and, uh, elicited the help of the others. That was in late October. The audit logs, uh, that I did receive indicated and has been verified by Telecom were deleted in a soft deleted status. Now, as I believe, the only person that has access at that time to your server was Mr. Lloyd. So I can't, uh, I can't imagine why you would say they're unrecoverable. And his, I understand now former employer, um, verifies that that was not true. The mayor also said that something to the effect, uh, tapes are better than my, um, verbatim, uh, recollection that, uh, the service of Telecom was bad and that she in fact was gonna elicit help from Mr. Lloyd. I don't know how many of y'all get or if any of y'all get Arkansas Business Journal, but they're having annual best of biz where they list several different varieties of businesses. And I think you'll find Telecom as number one in some categories and runner up in several others. So, um, I'm, I'm not sure how they got that reputation by giving poor service. But in further review, um, I realized that sometime about in September, uh, invoices started being generated and, and as a matter of fact, Mr. Waskowiac pointed out after the November financials were presented, um, asking who, who is Greg Lloyd? Because there were several invoices and the mayor said he was an employee of Telecom. Now, that being said, I asked for those invoice copies that were made to Mr. Lloyd. And interestingly enough, the first invoice had a remit to of a indivi- uh, company, or at least I guess it's a company called Cove dash networking. Now, I don't know why, but that was marked through on the paid invoice and replaced with the name of Greg Lloyd. Now, some of y'all are in business, but I can't imagine any rational, uh, reason that an individual that's employed by a company all of a sudden would be getting paid uh, directly as an, as, as a, um, direct contractor of the city. I asked for a contract, there is none. Um, and not only the first invoice, but a total of six of fifteen invoices that were generated and paid by the city or generated two and paid by the city. Six of those had the Cove, um, name on it struck through and Greg put on it. All of the fifteen invoices had Cove in another location on the invoice presented. Um, again, I ask, I ask you all, if you had a company and you had a contract with a customer and you had an employee that provided, um, services to, uh, your customer, all of a sudden there wouldn't be no, it's according to the CEO of Telecom who I spoke with, why in the world would you expect it normal to start paying that individual? You know, rather than the company, oh, but you didn't. You continue to pay Telecom through the end of December. As a matter of fact, review of your disbursement registers show that something over sixty-eight thousand dollars was paid to Telecom. In that same time period, and here's the invoices from, uh, Mr. Lloyd, it totals something over seventy-one thousand. Now, if, if one takes under the inquiring minds and wants to look at who Cove, uh, dash networking is, Google it. Google it and you'll find a webpage, very unusual webpage, I might add. Most webpages have hyperlinks that you click on. No hyperlinks, there were hyperlinks or appeared to be, but they go nowhere. Kind of odd, I think. And then it would seem that if you do have a company and you were doing business with Arkansas, whether or not you have to be registered with SOS Secretary of State, which Cove Industries is not. Individuals don't have to register under SOS, they do have to be with FOI or with, um, DFA, I'm sorry. But if you look at the Texas Secretary of State's franchise records, there is a Co Networking Inc. Oh, but it only come into existence in October, several weeks after the first invoice that I mentioned came in and was paid by the city. What really should concern, I think, everyone is that not only during the time period you were paying, uh, Mr. Lloyd seventy-one thousand dollars over a full month period, you paid your contracted IT vendor sixty-eight thousand. If you'll examine the invoices from both of those entities, you duplicate paid for IT support. I, I can't imagine how that would have occurred, but it did. And the records are speak for themselves that I provide. And I got the records from the city's files. There's a bigger problem. Um, I understand you have auditors on site and, uh, it's a legislative audit. Audit, so I called the legislative audit and inquired because I was vaguely familiar from past experiences that there is what? And the memo that I received today from the DFA, uh, and by the way, let me back up, I regress, uh, Telecom, the contract. You have this contract, it was signed by Mayor, um, Angela in, um, August of twenty twenty-two. Now, any contract you sign has some certain provisions. But what really seems to be, uh, interesting is if you look at, um, service levels, it provides for a very strict protocol of written communications if you're dissatisfied with the services and escalates. I asked under FOI once again that the city provide me any of that communications, they had none. Neither did Telecom, so there had been zero, I mentioned zero comments about poor service. Now, I did talk to the police chief who seemed to have had some problems. The police chief was unaware that there was a binding contract in place. The other interesting thing, if you read the contract, there's a clause in there that says no hire, which specifically spelled out that a customer that is utilizing their personnel shall not be able to hire, contract or otherwise to do business for a period, I think of six months. I also learned that Mr. Lloyd has a rather strict employment agreement that he violated. So in looking at this double billing, one of the things, and it's good to see that you've got a, what I call a true-up, uh, budget tonight to bring you back in compliance because you can't overspend budgets according to the legislative audit. And you can true it up, which is what you're doing now, but these fifteen bills caused you in many line items as according to your, uh, Mr. Panalto, uh, the way they were coded. And you were overspent, all you gotta do is look at page eighteen through twenty-three of the year ending, uh, budget. Um, the split billing procedure basically in layman's terms prevents, well, first of all, there's a law regardless of the spending limit of your mayor. There is a law that requires the city of the first class, any expenditure contract or let's use it as a subscription contract, naturally you're not gonna probably pay, uh, thirty-five thousand, which is the limit in a single invoice, but it speaks to, and it's, it's a very good description in this, uh, gotta get the correct terminology, Office of State Procurement that outlines what a split billing or split, um, procedure that I've explained, but they use the example of a, of a lawn mowing contract or some sort of a, a recurring monthly bill. And if that bill for the term of the contract exceeds And if that bill for the term of the contract exceeds 35,000, the law says, and I've provided the laws that says this, I think it's 1458 303, that you shall not break down and try to circumvent the law. And there's other sections that get more specific about that by breaking it down. So you pay less than 35,000 to get around the bid requirements. So I'm not sure why that was done. But the interesting, you know, there's always a catchphrase, not make America great, which I think is a great catchphrase, but at the bottom of this memo, which will be provided with says, when in doubt, bid it out. Pretty neat, I think. But I also reviewed the city's policies regarding self-dealing with aldermen, mayor, whatever. And, and it's very, the language in there is very clear that, hey, err on the side of caution. In fact, I can't understand why there was a no bid contract, which I understand there's a contract in place with the mayor's daughter for janitorial services, whatever they may be, but it would seem to me like that if one of your children or husband, wife, whatever, you would, you would at least put it up for an opportunity to bid, which I asked for. There's no advertising records in your city files. So why would not do that? But back to the bigger issue at hand, of those 71,000 and change invoices that were produced, there's $6,500 worth of sales tax generated. Now, everybody ought to be interested in that. I've heard the other day, somebody said, oh, we asked for five million to be allotted to a fire, to a water tank, but it's really gonna be six. How are we gonna pay for it? Well, you're not gonna pay for it if, if, if you don't collect all your sales tax. Now, funny how this law is applied for in Arkansas due to various reasons. The Chamber of Commerce lobby is made it very emphatic. And I kind of, I kind of agree with it that there's no way any of y'all can find out how many dollars a certain individual paid unless you have a copy of their invoices or charged, I say, in, in that. But then going back to it, there's no way you could find out if they've turned it in with one exception. It's ACA 2673114. Now, that might, if you go back and look at your emails that you were copying on in March, seemed like this question was raised when the mayor's son-in-law operated without a business license for a period of months, yet generated invoices to the city and were paid by the city. And in that case, there was just under a thousand dollars worth of sales tax on three or four invoices. I raised question about that. And I in fact made an FOI to you, Mayor, that would you please look at 2673114, provided you a copy of it, and ask for this report to prove that your son-in-law paid the sales tax? Your reply, I can't give you what I don't have. That's more an asinine statement because I realize you can't give any documents you don't have. But as a mayor, I would certainly think you would want to know that your sales tax, whether it be your son-in-law or Joe Blow, was being paid back to the DFA who redistributes it to you. Clearly, these actions and others currently pending in the courts illustrate the complete lack of knowledge or maybe a total disregard of state law by the mayor. And the conduct to uphold our duties seems to be strongly lacking. In summary, the council is charged in Arkansas law as being the fiduciaries of the city's financial matters. I only ask y'all, every one of you, to stand up and please do that job. Thank you.
Sorry, Mark. Dowdna 462 Pose Lane, and I hope that you give me 20 minutes to give you a history lesson. We just got an IT lesson. I'm gonna give you a history lesson and I expect to get the same amount of time because what you just witnessed there is what you're opening up to what me, Larry, Rhonda Artemani, a lot of us witnessed back in the wild, wild west of Mick Wagner. Okay? So let's talk IT. Let's start there. I got involved in 2012 and I got involved because our IT was unreal for a size of 2,500 people. We were paying 75 to $100,000. Depending on what Mick Wagner wanted, he got because he had people that sat on the council that pretty much did whatever he wanted. These are facts. Can pull it all up. So he's running our IT company and he has a guy named Ronnie Thompson, who has changed his business name two or three, maybe four times in the whole time that he'd been operating through us. And when I became a short, three week recorder treasurer, when Mick Wagner was FOI-ing us to death and we had four recorder treasurers, including Cara Jo, Larry's niece, quit because this man inundates you. He stated there was 129 FOIs like they're nothing. When they're massive, you know, FOIs, they may be one, but there's a thousand of claws he puts out there. He needs information for, for his brain, I guess. So what he did, what he did was he was running our water department at the time. We could, he just pretty much ran our city. I put a petition together and I shut down the water commission, turned it back into a water department. Ooh, didn't think I could do it, but I did it. Then I went after him on planning, did the same thing there, shut him down and turned it into the planning board so I could get his butt out of here. When I come on board, I was watching these IT amounts just rocket under this Ronnie Thompson. So when I was a recorder treasurer, I called him in and I said, hey, Ronnie, what's going on? You know, and he is very hostile towards me. I mean, he is hostile. And he continues on to tell me that he works for Mick Wagner, two other companies, and that he's running the city. And I said, I wanted kind of like what Mick just asked for. I wanted his hard drive. Can I see everything that was going on? Because we had what was called, you know what he just brought up to you about this mystery deal? We had what was called global relay. Couldn't find out who ran this company, but every single email, I don't care if it is, an email came in and said, hi, how you doing? It had to be recorded and stored in this global relay. And I'm like, what is global relay? So as running for council, I ran around and I talked to Washington County. I talked to every small town. What do you guys, I went to the municipal league when I got my seat. What do you guys pay for IT? We're 2,500 people and we're paying 100,000. Oh, that's insane. 25,000 to 30,000 is what we should have been paying, but we weren't. So here we are. We got this global relay. So I asked every one of them, what's global relay? How long do we have to store our emails? Because we're being told by Mick, our IT guy, who was made official on paper in 2013 or the start of 2014, our IT director. Okay? So I can't find out. They're like, I don't know what global relay is. Never heard of it. You don't have to store any of your emails. I was told you can read them and delete them right then and there. You can do that. It's nothing you're hiding. Even the IT guys were saying, I don't want you logging up all your deals with emails. I want them cleared out. Clear them. Don't need to store them. Don't have to store them for this man to FOI. Well, push comes to shove, 2014 hits. I run, I get a seat. These good old boys, I call them pocket men, are on their way out. They spent all of our money. We got boxes coming in nonstop of what they spent and blew money on just so they could drain the tills. And our bankroll was bouncing on our paychecks and we were in trouble. So the global relay come to find out was set up, which I can't prove this, but I couldn't get nobody to answer that wonderful global relay. And we come to the conclusion, our new IT guy, that it doesn't exist. We think Ronnie Thompson, Mick Wagner's little IT guy, set this up. And we paid $600 a month for this wonderful thing to use to store 20,000 emails that had to be FOI-ed on a regular basis because it kept the city crazy. And that's what he liked. If he could keep you running and keep you going, he had more power over here to do what he wanted. And he did just that. I watched it. Larry watched it. We all watched it. We all became a part of one to run together to get it to stop. Okay? So that's our history with our IT guy. So to December of 2014, the good old pocket man that, you know, he's got in place here. And I have no doubt he put in place that all of a sudden now we have a contract. We hadn't had a contract with Ronnie Thompson, the IT guy for years. But now we're locked into a year contract of 100 and I forget the exact amount. Don't hold me to it. But it's unbelievable. And we're like, what? You can't do this. Lock a new council into this. Well, they did. They did it and they got away with it. Exactly two weeks after that contract was up, folks, our host system burned to the ground, to the ground. Another incident that happened when our wonderful new police department came on board, not the deputies, our police department, we were setting up our computers. And we had some young rookie one night popped in here, was doing a report. And he freaked out because somebody popped up on a secured server through the police department that shouldn't have been there, popped up and saw it, told the city. City gets to check and then well, somebody popped in, but couldn't find out who popped in. Well, Ronnie Thompson ran our system at that time. Imagine that. I don't take any pride in listening to this man talk about what you're doing wrong because I watched what he did wrong. And I helped stop what he did to our city back in the day where we didn't grow. We're growing too much now, but we needed growth back then. And we were like a poison pen to come through this town because Mick Wagner, I'm not going away. This man went after me, went after my family. I am a convicted felon because of this man and Joe Edgeman set up a little scheme. I just always thought if you tell the truth, it'll set you free. Well, it doesn't work like that in court. Doesn't work. Even my appeal attorney said, wow, everything you told me is true. He thought I was nuts at first. And after dealing with Dorette and all the crazy that Mick brings to the table, he went, this town is nuts. And if every one of these up here, the judge, the prosecuting attorney, have it out for you, prosecuted all murderers. And Rhonda Dowdna that year for falsifying a signature on a petition that I had over 400 extra signatures for. I didn't need no falsifying nothing. And I had to redo the, the wonderful, you know, petition because his attorney, JR, who was our attorney, said, I did it wrong. So I redid it real quick and got it presented and it went through and we removed his butt. We cannot allow every citizen to sit up here for 30 minutes and talk. We have rules and regulations for reasons to keep it. And if you start this with this man, this is how it's gonna, you're gonna bring back the Wild West. Now, did you see what he did to your mayor? We all know what he does. He first started back a year ago in December with Mike, Tim and Danny. He's old cooing them, contacting them, and he's trying to split your council. Not saying you're doing it. I'm just saying that's how it starts. He tests the waters, see where he can get with you. And then if he can use you, he uses you. Those are facts, folks, and I can bring them up. But then when that don't work, he goes after your family, your livelihood, your jobs, your family's jobs, your son-in-law's business, your daughter who's just trying to make a freaking living cleaning. And I doubt she makes much from her cleaning with Luann that they split the, the deal. Woo, we're wasting a lot of money. This man is wasting city time. 32 hours Jamie spent on one FOI, folks. And you think that's okay? And you want to take cues from this man who is hell bent on running us? Tommy Gernotta said to me, I said, oh, I just wish he would go away. I was talking to Tommy. Hey, you know, I just wish Mick would go away. He goes, he ain't gonna go away until he burns us to the ground. And I laughed. We got our seats. Tommy come on board from a mayor to a council seat because he wanted change for the right reasons and to do the right thing. And he burnt us to the ground. He took all of our money. We struggled. And that's where we're at now. He wants to give you advice on IT? I don't think so, Mickey baby. We're done. Go put your money where it would help our town. Maybe we'll put something with your name on it.
I'm a rule follower. Is Ari on here? Mark Calcagney, 12642 Arbor Acres, a third of my property, I would say this is in Tonty Town. So thank you for me allowing me to publicly speak. I appreciate what this room does for Tonty Town, everybody. And I'm truly, I mean that. I'm here tonight as a result of what was said by a citizen that referenced me and what the mayor said at the last city council meeting. A citizen said, I reimburse the city for legal fees for the citizen's lawyer's fee. The legal fees were a result of the citizen's lawyer and the city's environmental lawyer working together. If you watched the PC and E pollution control and ecology case, you would see they both worked together. The legal costs were for depositions and research that the city's environmental lawyer was supposed to do, but he was not able to do it. So the citizen's lawyer did this work, which was pretty expensive because there was travel back and forth. We did reimburse the city for the legal fees. The city council approved this payment way before we reimbursed the city for this legal fee bill from the citizen's lawyer. If the citizen, if this citizen is so concerned with the city's funds, as the mayor stated last, in this last city council meeting, this city drives man hour cost as the city has to spend money, many, many hours researching. I think someone said that Rhonda did. He requests, he requests, he requests a ton of FOIs. If even the cost of the city as a citizen's lawyer billed the city, so it costs the city because the lawyer, the citizen's lawyer billed the city for the FOI that he got from the citizen. I don't know why this citizen fights the city and his neighbors in favor of waste management as he knows about the three air tests that showed high levels of carcinogen chemicals in the air as he has family close to this landfill and he has property extremely close by, by this as, as well. You would think he would be on our side, but maybe there's something there we don't know about between him and waste management. Lastly, please attend the public hearing that ADQ is holding at the city, at the Tonty Town's church here, the hall. It's on February 27th between 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM. Waste Management is requesting an air permit. Why should we grant Waste Management an air permit knowing three air tests showed harmful chemicals in the air? People have gotten sick and have gone to the hospital with respiratory issues. It's like giving whiskey to an alcohol if they grant this permit. Thank you. I made it. 30 seconds.
Good afternoon. Kenneth Love, 18702 Clearwater Road. What a night. I didn't write anything down because I wasn't really planning on talking, but um, see if I can gather up what I'm thinking about. Anything I'm about to say is my opinion. So take it with a grain of salt. Last meeting we were in, we discussed, or I talked about trash. And what I meant to say, if I was talking trash, don't listen to me. Same as Mr. Mickey Wayne. If he's talking trash, don't listen to him. I sure don't remember what I was gonna say. That kind of told me off. But anyway, I don't understand why you let your children and your grandchildren move into a house that's right there close to the vapors. It's nice that he give it to them. I'm probably sure he didn't really give it to them or something in the book. That's okay. I hope his daughter moves away quick. My wife's sick because of the landfill. That's all I'm gonna say. We have a lawyer that is putting his tentacles out, trying to find out details. The mail comes to your house as an advertisement. So look through all your mail. If you don't have it, let me know. I'll get you a copy of it. They need to know what you've been exposed to and how it affects your life. And I'd appreciate anybody that hasn't seen that, reach out to me and I'll be glad to get it to you. Like Mark said, February 27th, correct? On a Thursday across the road over here at the parish hall, there will be ADQ meeting. They don't listen to you saying this is the problem or I feel. They want to hear your details on the sign. Or I feel they want to hear your details on the scientific part of it. And then when they get to that, all they'll do in their comments is we recognize your comment or we acknowledge your comment is all they got to say. And then they just push you off and their judge down there that they have working for them does what he wants to do. No matter what the law says, there's a difference in the law and there's a difference in justice. And we haven't got any justice. And I'm shaking. Because that's the way I am. I feel like there's a lot of stuff going on around here. It needs to be tended to. Uh, I voted for Sarah Sanders. It won't happen again. I voted for Judge Deacons. That won't happen again. The county give the, uh, Washington County Emergency Response Group, whoever that is, $1 million. For what? They're building this fancy building. I can call them. They won't answer the phone. I call them at 6:00 PM. They won't answer the phone. You leave a message, they won't call you back. You send an email, they won't answer it. I went and talked to the quorum court in the last meeting and I'll be at the next one. That's their responsibility. We don't have no control of that. I don't understand, you know, I can't work in my yard. There's been two times I was mowing the yard on a ride mower, couldn't breathe, had to go in the house. Go back out there, it's fine. That's vapors. You can't smell them, but they're there. I open my garage door, go in there, sit down, reading my phone, can't breathe, had to go in the house. Can't smell it. ADQ, CETA tested our air 50 feet in front of my door, right down by Mr. Calcagni's grandson, grandkids. Forty-nine hundred percent over the EPA RSL. Didn't smell it, but it's 4900%. What is it when you do smell it? Benzene, 209%. Benzene is obviously cancerous. I can fly my drone. There's oxidizer out there steady running off that RNG plant. Tawny Town started having problems in 2012. That's when they started the gas plant. Gas to energy. It got worse in 2023. That's the RNG plant. They have a way to fix this today. You could pull a flatbed trailer out there with a scrubber on it. Wet scrubbers, what they call it. Circulate that through those vapors as those vapors blow it through there. It will neutralize that. I'm a country boy. I'm not stupid. Easy fix. Drag a trailer out there, hot tap it and be done. Won't nobody stand up to them. Eco Vista? I don't care how much money they have. I'll fight them till I'm dead or they kill me. Thank y'all. Anyone else?
Scott Argomani, 765 Argomani Road, employee at the Public Works Department in the city of Tawny Town. This is going to be quick. I want to thank Nina Brown. She stopped by, she's done this more than once, uh, brings us snacks, all kinds of goodies. And she buys us the good stuff. So she, uh, uh, she's greatly appreciated. I wanted to come up and address this publicly. Thank you very much, dear. If you need something, you call me. Look at that clock. See, that's how you do it. Anyone else? All right. Is there anybody online that would like to talk to us, James?
Well, moving on to old business of which we have none. New business, a discussion of an ordinance to approve the Castellini Phase Two rezone. Mr. Spurlock.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Want to bring this to you tonight. Uh, we have an ordinance letter for you to review. Uh, this is a project that is going to be taking place behind Ironhand Liquor. Uh, it's a second part of what they've already done, uh, previously. And, uh, we, once you look at your, uh, approval letter that we have from the city council, it was voted unanimously on November 26th. Uh, we're bringing it before you guys now to review, to move forward. Planning Commission, um, Planning Department has recommended approval. Once again, it was approved unanimously by the, uh, Planning Commission. So we do have the applicant here for any discussion. Uh, they're moving it to commercial, to CT, which is commercial and trades. So if you have any questions, by all means, you're free to ask. The applicant is here to answer any questions.
Citizens, do we have any citizens like speak to that? Council?
I just want to let you know I've got Mike Washcoyak here on, on my phone and he's going to be able to speak on, on the mic.
Okay.
Hey, everybody.
So seeing as how we have no discussion?
I think he's talking. Um, may I?
Sure.
Thanks. Would you walk us through just quickly? I've seen it. I understand it, but the difference between commercial and commercial trades?
Yeah, commercial, uh, has more of your overall retail structures. Uh, commercial and trades is more, uh, if you want a condensed like a warehouse, warehouse type, it's not as big. And so it's, it is designed for, uh, more of a kind of a smaller structure along that way.
And this is point seven seven acres, obviously small enough. Future land use is residential. Um, we're not going to do any residential on point seven seven acres. Um, how, how did that come to be? How did we end up with such a tiny little?
Well, you know, you know, this goes back before I was here, but the commercial and trades was listed in there. When they first came was about the time, uh, I started, uh, Garber had recommended this, I believe. You guys remember this correctly. Garber had recommended the first phase of this, uh, to go to CT. So we're trying to be consistent with this phase now.
Sure, understood. And, um, and, and what exactly are you doing with it?
Uh, it would be Nico Bursey, uh, project manager for the Castellini project. It would be a almost nearly exact replica of what we have existing, uh, up on the screen right there. So right behind the building, which is Jose's and the other tenants in there. We are about 99% complete with that building right now. And it'll be, it's flex space office warehouse. So it's a couple of office units, a bathroom, the rest of it's warehouse.
And how, how are you getting in there? I mean, that's a really tight space between Ironhand as it is, and then down there by the donut shop and all that stuff.
Yes.
Uh, where are people getting in and out of there?
Uh, there's an access easement that goes from 412 to 112. So they can come in or out either way. Uh, primary use is probably going to be 112. The phase two, which is what we're talking about today, will actually add a full driving lane width. The existing curb north of the Ironhand building, uh, will be removed and that will be a driveline installed before our parking spots.
And so where do their trashcans go?
Uh, there's a dumpster enclosure that's already built and it's on the southeast corner of the highlighted parcel there, uh, of the, of the highlighted one that we just constructed for the, the first building.
And that will remain?
Yes. Yep. It's a double gun, double dumpster gate for two of them.
So then, uh, part of that, uh, what is the, the, the southern end of your green space there and, and over, there's going to be a driving lane in there that's approximately how wide?
Um, I believe it's nine, 10 to 20 feet, but I could be off. Uh, it's, it's close to that.
Okay. And then what sort of vehicles can come and go there?
I don't think there's a limit. I mean, right now there's currently semi trucks that go through there. Uh, and we're just only adding space to it.
Okay. Because some, there are some eyes that drive back behind.
Correct. Yep. Domino's, nearly everybody there gets deliveries almost daily.
So you'll have a space about as wide as the one behind Ironhand that's a driving?
Correct. It's almost just doubling what's there.
Okay.
If it's not, if not more.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Question, you'd said it's, you had described it as almost a duplicate of the existing structure. What are the differences between the two that are?
I think the only difference, and it's still to be determined a little bit due to what tenants are interested. But the west end of it, since it's, it's not 112 frontage, but it's nearly frontage. Uh, that one might be a little bit more on the retail side since they've got some good traffic visibility. Um, if not, then the rest of it will be just the same flex space.
Um, I also noticed when I went back there and was driving almost in between the two buildings, from the Domino's building to Jose's, on the backside, there's almost some utility work that's right there. Are you guys going to move that or is that?
So there is a transformer, uh, a transformer and a vault box for Ozarks Electric that due to the process was nearly impossible to move without shutting down power to everybody in front of them. Uh, so the solution that we came up with was to curb around it, uh, and to make it a, a one-way on each side of it.
Gotcha.
Because that almost couldn't move. So we left it there. Uh, and it still has a full, full driving lane on each side, north and south side of that.
Gotcha.
So that will remain.
Okay.
Anyone else? So I, yes, motion to send it on to city council?
I'll make a motion that we move it to city council.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
I have other questions, but I'll ask them in two weeks. Yes.
Mike?
The next two weeks, I should say.
Are you there, Mike?
Larry?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
All right. Send it on to city council.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next we have a discussion of water rate increase. Mr. Clark.
Hello. So at the last meeting, yes, at the Cal meeting in January, we, uh, initially talked about the water rate increase. Uh, one of the things that came up was the fact that we were wanting to raise the base rate, uh, $3 a month. And then one of the reasons for that was to start implementing the fixed base meter reading system. Um, at that point, I don't remember if it was Mr. Burris or who it was, but, uh, there was more questions about the fixed base meter reading system. So, um, I've taken the opportunity to have, uh, Mr. Danny Peacock here tonight. He is with Neptune Metering Systems. And he's going to give you a short, but, uh, hopefully a little better, uh, description of how the system works and what it can do for the city. And, uh, after he's finished, I would like, uh, Mr. Zach to come up and, uh, kind of give you a little short, uh, success story of how the fixed base meter reading system, uh, helped when he was at Washington Water. So with that, Danny Peacock.
Good evening. Name's Danny Peacock. I'm with Neptune Technology Group. Uh, I've got a couple of slides I'm going to share with you. So a little history about, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. Little history about, uh, Neptune. We're based out of Alabama. We're the oldest meter manufacturer in the country, 132 years old. Um, we, um, we pioneered the AMR system, AMI system years ago. We, uh, we, we have over 6.5 million RF MIU radios nationwide, which is huge. Um, we have over 3,000 reading systems nationwide, just in the United States. Um, and we touch and read over 72 million meters nationwide. That's a pretty big deal. Uh, like I said, everything's manufactured in Alabama. We do everything in-house, our software, our development, our, uh, we have a foundry also. We're the only meter company in the country has our own foundry. Everybody else forces everything out, out of the country. Uh, we do all electronics in-house. We do all the molding injection in-house. Um, and annual production is about 2 million meters a year, which I think is a little bit more now. This is a little diagram of an AMI. You know, a big picture of it where people can really understand it. Uh, at the bottom you have your meters, you know, uh, the one, two, three, five meters. And it goes up to a, we call it a gateway or a collector that's mounted to your, a tower, a water tower, anything that's high. Then it goes to, to the internet, then it goes to our head and software, which we call it Neptune 360. And then, uh, your customer service and guys out in the field can take it and use the information for your, your customers. Any questions so far? Cool. And this is the gateway. Uh, this will be at the bottom of your tower, what have you. Uh, no programming. We can do AMR, NAMI, uh, 20-year battery life, unlimited reads, uh, frequency hopping, uh, data for a customer portal. Customer portal is where your customers can log in and see their data within almost real-time 15 minutes. Uh, that's a added, additional added cost if you want that for the future. Uh, data logging, your guys go out in the field, they can log a computer, show the customer real-time what your meter's doing within 15 minutes. Uh, eliminate meter reading. You guys out in the truck riding around flipping lids or reading meters will eliminate that. Everything's going to be AMI. It'll automatically go to our gateway and like I said, to the head-end software. And here's a summary. Like I said, the number one meter in the country. Uh, we guarantee forward capability where we won't leave your assets behind. Like we do another, we add on to our software, what have you. We're going to bring it along with us. We don't make you pay more just to keep up with us. Uh, all our software is integrated with all types of, uh, billing software. Uh, only fully recognized manufacturer. We guarantee encoded reading integrity and then compliant with this NSF 61. And of course I'm local here. I used to live in Kaysprings, now I'm moving to Huntsville. So you have a local representative to help you out. Any questions?
Give us a couple of examples of benefits to go to this.
Sure. Um, you get real, you get real-time information. So if a customer has a leak, uh, if you set your parameters in the software, they'll shoot whoever's involved, uh, an email. Hey, I have a high leak. Come check me out. That could save your customer, you know, right now you're doing every 30 days. I'm assuming every 30 days you read your, you know, 30 days of information. You don't know if they have a leak or not until you catch that read. Or this, you have 15 minutes information. So as soon as it hits a leak over 24 hours, it's going to alert you or somebody, hey, come check me out. Uh, we can do zone metering, take your large meters and pull them outside your city. And we can catch, you know, see what's going on in a particular area. If you've got a water leak, what have you, um, identify leaks, backflow events. So if you have a backflow, if you have a large, uh, leak or have you in your main line, your backflow will, it will also send a, uh, email to whoever. And then, um, consistent billing is another deal. It's going to be consistent. Uh, that's where the encoder, encoder comes in. Uh, there's no hiccups.
And I know that you said we tied it to our water tower. How many for our size? How, we have one for both our water towers like, cause we're fixed with the?
We did a prop study here two, a couple of months ago. Uh, right now, uh, you have two towers. We'll put two, one on each tower. And then I think you have another tower coming up in the future. We're going to put one on that. And I cannot remember the percentage, but it's high 90 something percent, 95, 96% of what we can catch.
Those five different types of meters?
Yeah, those are five different types. And Mr. James is just wanting a T10. It's a positive displacement meter.
Basic, it's the, it's, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
What, what do those run again per meter?
Dog, I, I don't do that. I, I don't know.
James, you probably know. I think you told us last week.
Okay.
Could you give us an example, success story of maybe a smaller, another smaller town that's maybe went to this?
Yeah. Centerton, everybody knows Centerton, Fashion's growing city in the country. Uh, they were AMR where you drive by and catch read what you're doing right now. And then, um, year four last, Mr., um, oh my gosh. Oh, what's his name that retired? Um, Frank. Frank said, hey, Danny, I want to do something for the city before I leave. I said, perfect. Let's do AMI. He said, let's do it. So I did a prop study, um, and a couple of years ago, we put up four towers, I believe. And, um, success, they love it. Uh, they're, it changed. I told a lady in the office, customer services, I said, look, this is going to change your way of thinking tomorrow. Cause once you put, put a gateway up, it automatically goes to AMI the next day. And it really blew their mind. It was pretty cool to see.
So can you tell me about approximately how much water was saved?
I, I don't, I've never asked. Um,
Like if there, is there a substantial amount?
Sure. Anytime you put new meters in, you're going to save money. Cause right now you, if you got older meters or they're 10, 12, 15 years old, the wear and tear cost is a moving meter. All the plastic pieces in there, they're going to wear and tear over time. So you will see, I can't tell you how much, but you will see an increase in, um, water use or water usage as you put new meters in.
Decrease in loss.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And how, how long do they last for?
Uh, we guarantee them 20 years, 10 years is a full 100% warranty. And then 11, 12 and so on is a, we prorate it. So let's say 12 years it goes out for whatever reason, we're going to prorate it. And then we give you an option. Are you going to buy a new one or are you going? And then we give you an option. Are you going to buy a new one or are you going to, uh, warranty this and will you pay for the difference? It's, yeah, it's both 10 to 10, 20. The, the normal standard, all meter companies is about 20 years. Yeah. That's the standard na- nationwide. Yeah. Any other questions? I love doing this.
Mr. Peacock, you said you could use AMR and AMI. I'm, uh, that's radio frequency, uh, which is still drive by?
Correct. AMR is correct.
Or the meeting, I'm sorry, the metering infrastructure, the automatic metering infrastructure which sends it.
Correct.
Uh, is there a price differential on those?
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir. Uh, well, the meter's the same. Uh, if you go AMR, you have to have a device being in your truck. We call it MRX 920. That's between 12, 15,000. That's what will, if you do it at AMR. And then if you do the gateways versus AMI, um, and I'm going to throw a crazy number out, you, you're probably looking at 30 to 40,000 for each gateway.
And how many gateways would we need?
Uh, three. If you wanted 98% or so coverage.
Talking about the third tower that's still.
Correct.
We start with two.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Uh, you said at least three of those, no?
Yes, sir. And whatever we don't pick up with the gateways, we put the rest on cellular. So let's say you have a hundred, a couple of hundred left over. We'll put them on cellular where you can be 100% AMI, where no guys have to go out and read the meters physically.
And can you repeat how much those gateways were?
I'm ballparking between 30 and 40,000.
Sure.
Didn't you say 60 for the two or was that a number that I've made up in my mind somewhere?
The $60,000 figure I gave you was a package they were, uh, Schulte was putting together for us. Schulte is the distributor for Neptune. Uh, a package they were putting together for us so we could get started on the, uh, fixed base system, but they will just be the meters, the transmitters and the reading software. Um, so we won't have the full capability of the fixed base system until we get a large number of meters in the system. If that makes sense.
It's a process.
Yeah. I mean, unless we could spend the full million and a half dollars to go out there and just change every meter in the system, put up the gateways, uh, and, and buy the software and do everything at one time. It's going to take us a few years to realize the full capability of, of the fixed base system.
Remind me how many households we would need these meters for?
Uh, we're talking about 3,000 meters.
So what then is, is the idea on when, when we get to 3,000 meters? How quickly can we do that?
As quickly as I can get you to approve the funds.
Well, what, what's the, what's the current plan?
We're trying to find some, some, uh, either, uh, low interest loan or grant money to do it. And I, I really feel like that, uh, we're, we're going to find some money. It's more than likely going to be low interest loan. There's just not a lot of grant money out there right now. Um, but that could also change. Uh, with the change in administration, who knows if there's going to be more infrastructure money or less. So, uh, we will continue to look for any, any type of grant money we can find. And then like I say, we also could, uh, explore the, the low interest loan option, uh, you know, and pay out over a 10 year, say time span.
So the, I, I think the last time we talked about this, you said that there was a, a package where they were going to give us 200 of these or something?
Right. 144 meters and the software, uh, to be, and a handheld to be able to read those meters for about $60,000. And I mentioned that I normally I budget about 75,000 a year just to purchase meters.
So at, um, roughly 250 a meter, those 144 would generally cost about 36,000? And then the software then makes up the remaining $24,000 difference?
I would have to check that invoice, but, uh, that sounds.
Can we see a copy of that invoice?
Yeah, I can get that for you.
But I mean, could you do it now? Can we see it now or no?
Um, I might, I can probably find it before the end of the meeting.
Um, okay. So then that software, is that a, is that a one-time purchase or is that a?
Annual.
Annual. So this.
Yeah, there is an annually.
Do we know what the annual fee is? Cause the, the initial is probably more expensive, right?
It depends on how many meters you have is what we, uh, we do it per meter. Um, with 3,000 meters, um, it, it, I'm just guessing again. You, you're probably looking at 5,000 a year, give or take somewhere there. I don't know.
Also the 24,000 is the upfront. It's not 24,000 a year.
Yeah, I don't know what that is. It could be, uh, there's training in there. There's a setup fee, uh, to set it up.
The handheld.
Uh, the handheld.
Yeah.
Um,
Do you have anybody from your company that can answer those questions for us tonight or?
Not with Neptune. I, I don't do the pricing. My distributor does the pricing like Schulte Supply. Uh, those guys had training today.
They here? Oh, they're not.
Unfortunately, they had training today.
Tried to get them here, but yeah, they had a training and I told them I needed to get something before you tonight. So I mean, if we need to do another, uh, meeting where we have them come and, and talk more about that, we can.
If I saw the invoice, I could explain to you what, what's what, but for some other time.
Uh, the, the, these are, these EMF frequencies, I know they drive, you know, crunchy folks in California nuts, right?
Yes.
Um, so do we understand the health impact on, on a population with that step out there?
Uh, we've never had any issue.
I don't hug trees on a regular basis, but I'm not.
Sure. Uh, I've been with the company five years. Uh, I've asked, I've heard people ask that question. Uh, from what I understand, there's, we've never had any kind of history of problems with it. Uh, so low frequency, so we used a 900, uh, megahertz. We're going to call them R900, our, our 900, our radios are called R900s. Um, but we've never had any issues.
So you use 900 megahertz?
Yes.
If you don't mind, I would like, uh, Zach to come and just give you a little bit of, uh, background on Washington Water since they did go through this, uh, process while he was there.
Now, real quick, now what they're, they use, um, a cellular system, which is not a fixed network. Theirs is all cellular. So keep that in mind, how he explains it.
I'll just be, uh, real quick, um, maybe give some context of some of the numbers he threw at you. Uh, with, uh, he's, I think he's pitching a fixed base system. Washington Water did in 2020, transferred to a cellular based system. We could, couldn't afford a fixed base system. It would take 100 fixed bases across the network. It was just too big. So we, uh, but we did go to an end user, uh, real time data, uh, and the impact was pretty immediate. I mean, he, he, he said he turned it on. You're like, and once you figure it out and take learning curves under a week. Wow. Uh, one thing we haven't really talked about, or at least what I haven't heard, um, is the benefit to the end user capability. Um, right now we're on a 30, a 30 day read. That means our meter reader can come out, read your meter. Next day you could spring a leak. If it doesn't pop up and you don't notice a, a drop in your pressure, you won't know, right? 29 days will go by before we're notified of the leak, right? That's a 30 day response time. Uh, right now, um, I think the city of Tonnentown Water Department has a write-off policy. So if you have a problem, our water department does help you out, but that is, you know, water we're not selling at retail rate. That's at wholesale rate. Um, with this, this system will notify you the next day, right? So you can be responsive to your own leaks immediately. Uh, and I don't know how many people, didn't get a lot of compliments when I was down there, but, uh, that was the only one that somebody personally came up and said, you finally did something right here. When they switched over. It's a really incredible system. Um, and, uh, it also gives the, uh, water department real time data to make real time decisions. Another one was, I know everybody's talking about leaks and how, how that works. Um, if set up correctly, I mean, this is how you, right now, we go out and hunt leaks. Um, but it's across the whole system. You know, in some places you got low pressure, you kind of know where a leak could be. You're just guessing unless it comes up. Um, with this, you can actually break the system into smaller sections called, you know, district metering zones. Uh, and you can break that into any number of systems you like. And as you drill down, you can find the bad systems or the, the bad parts of the system. Then you can focus your, your, uh, uh, efforts into, into looking at a, a narrow arrow instead of across the whole system. So a lot of, a lot of benefit to this. Uh, I know it was something I was proud to implement at Washington Water. That was done through an ARC loan at about 2%. I don't, probably can't get that today, but, uh, pretty cool system. Just if, uh, you have any questions about actual implementation or results, happy to answer any.
Any more questions, discussions?
I would like to make a request. If, if you're still uncomfortable or not sold on the fixed base meter reading system, um, I would request that we go ahead and put the rate increase forward to city council. If we need to leave the fix or the, uh, base rate increase off right now, we'll do that and address it at a later time, but we need to get the, the actual water rates implemented. Uh, we started paying the increased rate to, uh, 2 ton as of January 1.
Council, are we going to go with a, a base rate increase or just, just the water increase right now? Because the, the bait.
We personally just water increase right now.
So I, I guess we need a motion both ways.
May I ask a question? I, i- is the water department currently covering their own, y- your own expenses? Do, do you guys cover yourself or are you still underwater even after this?
Um, well, uh, well, hang on. That's a, that should be an easy answer. It is an easy, we are covering our expenses.
And yet?
Um, well, we, we, we have more expenses that we, we could cover if we had the additional revenue.
Okay. I don't, I don't know what you mean by that. You're covering your expenses, but you could cover, I mean, you, you could buy more stuff.
We could do more. We could have more staff.
Okay. Uh, so have you identified how much staff you need and how much money you need to give the water department what they need to cover their expenses?
Not a, no, that hasn't been nailed down. No.
Okay. Because I have a, I have a hard time, and I think probably some others here do too, of, of putting in a base rate, not, not putting in a base rate if we're not meeting the needs and putting in a base rate if we are, right? And if, and if we don't know what we're aiming for, we will never hit the target, right? So that's a concern, uh, to me. Uh, as a bit of a side note on these meter readers, uh, I, I, I'm thankful that, uh, Mr. Peacock was here. I, I didn't see him on the agenda. I didn't, I didn't know to expect that. But, um, uh, I, I would love to see pricing and see how the pricing lines up with what we've got. Um, you know, a- as of right now, it just sounds really cool. It sounds shiny and neat, but I, I don't, I mean, I love shiny neat stuff. Uh, but I don't necessarily see a reason for that. And then, um, and then I, I know these EMF complaints are massive. There are doctors all over the country that hate these things. Let me tell you a couple of reasons why. Smart meters operate with much more frequent pulses than cell phones do, increasing the potential for adverse health effects. Smart meter pulses can average up to 190,000 signals a day. Cell phones only pulse when they're on. Uh, cellphone, RFR or radio frequency is concentrated, affecting the head or the area where the phone stored. These smart meters affect the entire body. And lastly, an individual can choose when they've got their cellphone on and we can't choose that other thing. So, um, uh, normally I wouldn't even necessarily care about it, but as a council member, the single biggest complaint that I receive is the dump. What's happening with the landfill? And, uh, and all that comes from that. And ADEQ doesn't seem to do a great job of taking care of us. Uh, so that's something I'm really nervous about moving into a, a, another problem there. But as far as this goes, I'm open to what you guys think about base rate or not. Um, but I am, am concerned when we don't know what numbers we're aiming for. Your thoughts?
And another thing on the, the actual numbers, I'm still waiting on the, uh, rate study, the updated rate study to be completed by, uh, the community's unlimited. So I wanted to have that done before I brought this to you, but they've been slow to, to respond. So here we are. I, I need to get the, the rates increased just because of the, the pass through from 2 ton.
So I guess I'm asking for a motion to approve the, the rate increase and to send it to city council.
I'm okay with increasing the, the needed rate to get us in the black. Um, I'm not okay with the base rate at this point. Um, and yeah, I still have other questions and concerns about, about the new system, but I'd like to learn more. So I guess with that, I'll move this, I'll, I'll make a motion to move this to council with just the rate increase.
I'll, I agree with, with council member I borrow. I'll second that.
Roll call.
Daniel?
No.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Moving to city council. Yes. Mike?
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello?
Mike, thumbs up or down? That would be a yes.
Next, we have a discuss, oh, oh, excuse me. Uh, we do need to take a short pause for a cause.
Hello? Any luck with that? Can you hear me? Believe me, okay, sorry. Hello? Can you hear me?
No, so I'm not hearing you. Give me a second. Back track again.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Still nothing. Hold on a second.
Okay. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing, testing.
We hear you.
Okay, can you hear, can you hear me now?
We can hear you. So don't say anything bad. We can hear you. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm so sorry. I missed the beginning of that. You're talking about software costs?
Yes, just the software. Yeah, that's what you're paying for. That's the annual price.
Dollar, how much meter?
Uh, dollar twenty-four.
Okay. And, and we're paying a dollar twenty-four for that meter to do, to do what?
Mm-hmm.
It wa- a- a- and that, and that we, we get what for that dollar twenty-four?
Uh, you get software and the updates are automatically, um, this is the cloud-based software. So all the, all the um, updates we do automatically comes into it. Uh, there's no hidden fees. We don't charge for anything extra bells and whistles. It's all included.
And so when that says ordered three eight two zero each, that's, is there, are we missing a comma? Is it three thousand eight hundred and twenty? Are we missing a decimal? What is that number there?
Three thousand eight hundred and twenty? I guess that's what we quoted at the time. This was back in um, November, November.
I'm sorry, James? Okay. And we, and we have how many meters in town right now? Okay. Thank you.
So it'd be cheaper. Yeah.
Right. That's, that's based off of thirty-eight hundred.
Correct.
Meter. Not the hundred and forty.
Oh, yeah. If you do three thousand times a dollar twenty-four.
It's uh, thirty-seven twenty, three thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, guys.
Okay. And that's what it costs annually to pay for the software.
Thank you.
And it's not a contract. You want to cancel, you can cancel anytime you like.
Uh, will, will those meters work on anybody else's network?
No.
So we can cancel the contract, but we're stuck with a bunch of paperweights.
Unfortunately.
Three thousand. Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Uh, the next, the next line item is the setup fee. Uh, that's twenty-five fifty. That's for us to put it and get our software set up, to set up your software, your pages and everything. Uh, and make sure all your uh, data is correct and it goes into our software from your billing company. Uh, that's all that. That's a one-time fee. Um, the M R, the next line item, the M R X nine twenty, that's the box that rides in your, your truck, your vehicle to go out and read your meters until you get your gateways up, your collectors up. Um.
So that's not an either or, that's a both and fifteen thousand for the.
Yeah.
Drive around.
Um, and we can work on that if you like. If this, if it's a dollar deal, we can not charge you for that. I can loan you one if you like until you get your gateways up. Uh, I always keep a couple owners with me, so. Uh, but my opinion, I would have one just for a backup because the collector goes go out, lightning strikes and what have you, you guys gonna have, need to go out and read that, those meters somehow or another. So it's.
So those things can't go down?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yes, lightning strikes it. Yes.
They're roughly, a gateway is roughly thirty to forty thousand if it goes down.
Uh, it depends on what happens to it. I mean, um, it's, it's, you know, it's electronics.
Yeah.
Uh, it just depends on once we send it in and see what's, what happened to it. Um, so yeah, this.
But if it needs to be replaced.
Yeah, we'll fix it. Yeah.
And, and then the, the um, uh, hundred and forty-four each of those Neptune Trident, uh, ten pro coder water meter with integrated radio register and gallons. What, what is that?
That is the uh, meter that we're talking about. Um, that's what goes in your meter box in front of your house or behind your house.
Oh, that's only a hundred and forty-four of those? What, what was the three thousand up top?
That's uh, that's your, the whole system.
Oh, wait.
The way we do that.
Ultimately get there, which we are not there, but that number, the thirty-seven twenty, or in your case, the forty-seven thirty, whatever.
Yeah.
Part of that sixty-six thousand down there at the bottom.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so as built into this quote is, i- i- is a- about twenty-eight, twenty-seven, uh, fifty, two thousand seven hundred and fifty meters that we don't have.
Correct.
Okay, so that.
And this is just a package to get you started. This is all what we're doing.
It's just, I'm, I'm sorry, the math hurts my brain there because it's so, so wrong and so bad, but we can fix that. Okay. Okay, continue.
Uh, the next line, line item is the onsite training. We'll have somebody come out here and train uh, your personnel in the, in the office, your customer service and your guys out in the field. How to uh, operate the software, how to read the meters, uh, everything to do with the meter system, uh, work with your billing company. We set all that up also. Uh, we do our, our setup. We don't have you guys, we don't want you to do nothing unless you just want to be involved in it. So we take care of all that.
That process, is it a uh, a virtual?
No, we do it in person. We don't want to do virtual. You, you won't get it. No, we won't do it in person.
Okay. How, how long does that usually take?
Two days.
Week or two.
Yeah. Yeah. If we need to come back, we can do it. Refresh course, we'll come back, no charge. We don't, they're going to die me to death.
So that's a one-time fee and there's no additional fee for continuing support?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I mean, not, not unless you don't want to see her every week, we might have to do something, but let's say in a year, two years, you have some new personnel, he's been trained, we'll come out and train you, no questions asked.
Refresh.
Yeah. And then your billing software, they might charge you to move to a new system. Some do, some don't. So you have to get with your billing company and see if they're going to charge you for that.
So what is the, the one-year warranty annual maintenance contract, three thousand fifty-two? That's. Yeah, what is that?
Oh, that's on the M R X after a year. If you want to pay for maintenance on it, let's say it, it crashes and messes up. Uh, we'll come pick it up. We, we give you a loner. In the meantime, while we get yours fixed, and usually if it's something simple, we'll cover it. If it's something that, uh, when your guys calls, then we're not going to cover that. But you can decide that after a year if you want to or not. Uh, my opinion, I wouldn't do it because they're pretty durable. They'll, they'll last twelve, fifteen years.
Councilor, I borrow, I'm so sorry. What line item was that you were asking?
Um, it's under the Neptune mobile data collector one-year warranty. It's not in the line item on the right. It's sort of in the middle.
Thank you. I got it.
And that's optional.
So I guess I'd want some more clarification on the first line item. We're only in the package, we're getting a hundred and forty-four of the meters. That's kind of listed down below, but at the top, the software subscription that we're getting, we're getting three thousand eight hundred and twenty of that, of that software.
Correct. We have to, because we don't know, I mean, we know how many meters you have. We have to put it, we do it in tiers.
Right.
Like, um, this is.
Twenty-five hundred, five thousand or something like that. I got it.
It, it goes up. So we have, as a tier.
Twenty.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay. I see. I see. Thank you.
Okay. So, so we, we would be paying three thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, is that right, on three, for three thousand? Even though we're not using three thousand, we're only using a hundred and forty-four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So then i- is that, is that number, that other number that you showed of four thousand seven thirty-six? Which is the thirty-eight twenty, w- w- we have, that's the, the level we have to get to, right? We have to pay that much.
If you had all your meters installed. Now, I just saw this. This is A M R. This is just for A M R. Uh, this, this is not A M I. So if you, when you move to A M I, it's going to bump up just a little bit. A M I is a little bit more costly.
How much more do you think?
Um, I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know those numbers.
Okay. It is hard to make decisions without those numbers, but.
Sure, I understand.
So, so just so I understand, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm, I'm.
No, you're good.
I, I feel like I'm running around because I don't quite get it.
Yes, sir.
So i- is, is the minimum we have to pay a dollar twenty-four times three thousand eight hundred and twenty meters?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's in that tier.
Got you. So that four thousand seven thirty-six and I crossed it out. Was that eighty cents?
Yes.
Okay. So that four thousand seven hundred thirty-six point eight divided by a hundred and forty-four meters is actually thirty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents per meter.
Divided by twelve.
Divided by twelve.
Yeah. This one twenty-four per meter per year.
Oh, I, I understand, but whether we look at it by year or not, we went from a dollar twenty-four a meter to thirty-two eighty-nine a meter. Because we only have a hundred and forty-four meters, but we pay the same price that we would if we had three thousand eight hundred and twenty.
Correct.
So I understand.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
But it's going to be a little bit more than that because this is for A M R, not A M I.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And we can adjust that once we get the collectors up and go.
And, and you don't want to drive around anymore. You want the A M I. Is that fair? Is it correct?
So we need this quote to be revised into an A M I.
Well, I think even at the current price, um, you know, a- as James pointed out earlier, he, he buys about three hundred meters a year. Um, even with this number here, with a hundred and forty-four meters, we'd have to buy another hundred and fifty-six meters. That other hundred and fifty-six meters would cost thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty cents, uh, just to get us up to the usual three hundred. Uh, no, obviously we may not do that, but um, that then gets us closer up, uh, to over the hundred thousand dollar mark. Again, if we were trying to do that, that's a hundred and five thousand seven hundred dollars. Um, so again, cool shiny toy. Again, I've got some concerns about the E M Fs, but I'm not, I'm not certain that the cost savings are actually cost savings at this point either. But I do think if you guys are interested that it, we probably need to look more closely at it and get, as Danny said, that A M I quote.
So when you talk about costs, let me throw this at you. Um, no truck rolls, safety. You guys ain't out walking the streets or walking, you know, but whatever. Um, you save money right there. Uh, if, if a leak springs within an hour, you're going to know about it. So if you wait thirty days and the leak goes out, I mean, thousands and gallons of waters out on the ground not accounted for. So there's a lot of cost savings. Yes, you're going to pay upfront, but in the long run, it's going to pay off and pay off.
Well, that's a fair point and I like that, but we're only talking about, again, if I go to three hundred here, we're talking about three hundred meters. Otherwise, we're talking about a hundred and forty-four. So we're saving truck rolls on a hundred and forty-four.
Sure.
Which means that we still have truck rolls on the remaining three thousand in town. Uh, so we're still rolling trucks.
Sure. Yeah. Until you get it all installed. Yes.
And to roll by, um, those meters, uh, I think James told us about a year ago, it takes about a day for somebody to roll through there. Um, so yeah, I get that. There's somewhere to have the truck for that day each month. Um, and obviously there's somebody who's getting paid to do that. Uh, and those things are worth looking at. The last time we, we crunched those numbers, uh, there was a, it was vastly less expensive to let somebody roll the truck, but uh, maybe that's changed a little bit as we grow.
Hmm.
Cool. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you answering the question.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Did a great job. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, y'all. Have a great evening.
Moving on, we're having discussion of approving the twenty twenty-four amended budget. Would that be Mr. Pianalto? Is that who's amending the budget?
Amended budget is amended budget of twenty twenty-four. It's required that the council accept the amended budget by February of the following year from the previous year. So it's just getting all of our line items, our expense items in balance with what we actually spent on those line items.
You good with that, Mr. Burrs?
Uh, yeah, yeah. I, I know the drill. Uh, and, and I'm willing to make a motion unless some of these nice folks want to comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not ask if there were a citizen comment. Seeing none.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
We're going to move it to the city council.
That's what I meant.
Who did the second?
Amber did.
Sure. And Danny. Misty?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes. Next, we have a discussion of a resolution to set and affirm appointments to the tiny town planning commission. Mayor. Actually Brad. Mr. Mayor Brad.
No, 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 no. Uh.
Let's get you in trouble.
Um. What, what we have, uh, before you, you know, this is my first go around with doing this, so please, uh, correct me if I am wrong, but we have two open seat positions that they have fulfilled their term. Um, Mr. Kevin Boards, who is our chair, Ms. Candy Black, who's on the planning commission. Their term has expired. Both of them have been willing to serve again. They have submitted their letter of interest. Um, and what I went back and read the code, uh, and once again, this Kevin, or, um, attorney had told me that this is basically your call, uh, but it does state in there that if they have an open seat, I don't know since their term is up, it's considered open since they both want to be reaffirmed. But that they would have to, uh, submit their letters of interest, come talk to you, or if we need to publicize this. So, but both of them has expressed interest to uh, move forward and they are here to answer any questions if you so choose, but I am for one in favor of putting them back on the planning commission board.
Do we have letters of interest?
Comments from citizens?
Sorry. It's a good question.
Seeing none. Counsel.
Uh, d- d- does anybody have interest in these positions other than Mr. Boards and Mrs. Black?
They haven't, it hasn't been publicized? Is that what you were saying?
I don't know.
Only in the minutes?
Yeah.
And what was spoke at the, uh, planning.
Once again, the term open seat. I don't, that's where you guys can clarify it, even though their term is done.
I know the last time we did this, Josh, who left was up. I mean, we, people put letters in the tent in and.
I think it's probably the best way to handle it.
Up to council, which I'm great with both of them being back on.
Right. I mean, there's no reason to say that they can't come back, but just to be consistent. Is that fair?
Except fair.
And fair.
It's what we did last.
Is that what Mike said?
So.
I thought that was the, the voice of God. Thank you, Mike.
Not quite.
Not quite.
Yeah, that's the, the question I had too, is, uh, I think the last time that we ran into this, we had, uh, uh, other citizens that submitted LOIs. And I, I think that we should probably do the same in this instance. I read the code and it, it's, it's kind of vague on whether, on what open position means. I mean, it, we as the council get to determine. I guess we can decide if we want to just reaffirm the, the current status quo, or if we want to, uh, open it up for other people who might be interested in, in, in discuss those people as well.
Okay. So this is what, uh, what will happen. If you guys decide to go ahead and put it out, uh, to publicize it, I can get that taken care of. We can do it within uh, the nine days and then it will be able to be voted on at the next council meeting.
But anybody that, that is considering be on the planning commission, let it be known that they are going to have to be inside the city. These positions are inside the city. It is. So if someone is listening or someone shows some interest, they have to live in the city proper itself. So. Yes.
I don't know if there's something we need to vote on, but I, again, I just think to keep things consistent, it probably makes the most sense.
And.
Same consistent.
Hey, I, I'll give them, what, thirty minutes?
That sounds good.
Okay. So I guess who is going to, uh, are you going to s- put something out? Let, okay, letter of intent or something? Interested? Okay. So carrying on.
So is the intent to, um, uh, get the letters in and vote at the next meeting?
Yes, that's correct. So I will be the.
Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. I, I cut you off.
No worries. Um, yes. So what I will do is I will make sure that that gets put out. We will have, we will give them a specific number of days to get it, the letter of intent back into the city, the next city council meeting. They will all come and, and speak like they did the last time last year and, uh, we'll vote on at that time.
Okay. Then.
Go ahead.
Can I also suggest that we, we look at the, uh, the language in our code about the, the, the planning commission slots and maybe we will make it clear that, uh, it, just like we have to submit our, um, notice to run for reelection, that, uh, uh, these candidates will also, um, uh, submit their intent to either bow out or r- r- run for their same position. Because I don't think it's clearly stated in the code. Uh, I mean, the way this resolution is written, I mean, I, I think we could vote on them and just approve the two of them without doing anything. And we, we would be right either way we did it. I, I like the fact that we're going to open it up, but I think we also need to address that language too.
I agree. I, what I thought was that we could just reaffirm them from what I read too, so.
And I, I thought we, we went through this last year or whenever and, and, and voted to change it because every year it was, we were just reaffirming the same, which they're great, but it doesn't ever open it up for anyone else to take a seat or to show interest. And so I feel like we, I thought we made that change. So, um.
I, I did too personally, but I, I, I looked at the, uh, online because I'm, I've only got a printed, uh, version of the code from when I was first elected and, uh, I, I thought the, the updated would be online. Uh, and it looks a lot like what I had printed, but I, so maybe we didn't formalize anything. Uh, we just discussed it and just didn't formalize it, but we, we need to probably formalize it this time. Unless I'm wrong, unless, uh, there's something on, um, uh, out there electronically that I missed.
The only reason I feel like we formalized it, obviously it's not, it's, we don't have it in our codes is because we, we did go through that with Josh and who, who else was running. They had to put their letters of intent in and, and we had to do, you know, executive session.
Mr. Hudson.
Right.
Yeah, Mr. Hudson.
Yes. Right, right, right. So. Well, I feel like we made, but anyway, yes, I, I agree with you that we should change the, the verbiage and make it really clear. So is there anything we need to do with this?
And we're, we're planning on moving this to the upcoming city council and voting on that, not the next cow.
Next council.
Well, it has to be the next council because we have to have them the fall away the end of the month, do we not?
Correct.
Let's do it.
Okay.
A motion in a second.
A motion in a second to do one.
Need to move it to the next city council?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, move this forward with the, the caveat that we are going to advertise, uh, that interested candidates can submit, uh, letters of intent for the two upcoming positions on the planning commission. Within the nine days, I think is what we said.
I think you're, I think the problem with this particular verbiage is that what we're moving says Kevin and Candy, right? And again, I don't see any reason not to have Kevin and Candy come back, but.
You want to table it until the council?
Well, no, we can't.
Then you can amend it.
I'm sorry. Say it again.
It's just, on this, it just says it's a discussion tonight.
That's true. Yeah. But there's a resolution there as well.
And if the resolutions has those names there.
The resolution can be changed.
Okay.
Right. At city council.
Exactly.
Correct. So we can amend it.
Exactly.
There's the answer. Super. Thank you. Thank you, Rhonda.
So I will second Mike's motion.
Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Moving to city council.
Next, we have a discussion of the final twenty twenty-four quarterly report. Mr. Latham.
I will be brief. Just some highlights here. Uh, we did have a really good year, especially in the general fund, uh, specifically, um. Just kind of give you a overview. Um, the general fund total revenue increased nine percent compared to twenty twenty-three. Sales tax increased twenty-one percent since twenty twenty-three. Property tax increased nine percent for twenty twenty-three. Total funds available for capital improvements, which is the bottom line. Twenty twenty-three, which we had two million one hundred and thirty-seven oh forty-four to a total of three million four thirty-seven zero zero five. Um, if you go to the second page, there kind of, kind of outlines a little bit of, um, some of the actual, uh, points that we make, um, in regarding the, uh, total percentage of sales tax for general revenue. Last year was, uh, twenty-three percent. This year, uh, at the end it was twenty-six point seven three. Your percentage of property tax of the general revenue was roughly about the same. It's running about fifteen percent. Um, total sales tax per capita is actually increased from two oh eight to two thirteen, which is something that we need to be watching. We want to see that go down. Two things that I'm really, really proud of. Um, one of the things, especially in the general your operating cost is crucial, as we talked about the fact we have to have money left over. And, uh, so we're keeping our personnel cost at around fifty to fifty-one percent of the total operating, which is really good, to be honest with you. Um. This year, another really key target right now was the percent of total operating cost for revenue, which sat at ninety percent. Last year it was about a hundred. So we really didn't save a ton of money. So the total revenue funds available for capital projects went from last year at fifty-one percent to a total of fifty-one percent. So we're really making some good progress. Um, and I want you guys to know that. A lot of it really has to do with Pat's numbers that he always crunches together and hollers at us all the time, uh, specifically. Um, one of the interesting things, just to kind of give you an idea, if you look at administrative cost down there, I'm looking at cost per capita. Last year, our cost per capita for administration was a hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. This year it's eighty-five dollars. On the community development, last year was seventy-eight thirty-four, seventy-nine thirty-four. This year it's sixty-five eighty-eight. On the fire, um, our cost per service call continues to go up. It's roughly averaging about four thousand per service call. A lot of it has to do with, of course, we're, we're adding people, but we're also, uh, you know, if we just don't have the calls. So that kind of fluctuates. Um, the total cost though improved per capita last year was four hundred and thirty-three dollars. This year it's a hundred and eighty-nine per capita. So that's when somebody asks you, what's my fire service cost me? It's a hundred and eighty-nine dollars per person. A museum last year was, uh, cost per capita was six dollars and sixty cents. And it's actually at the end of this year, it was twelve dollars and eighteen cents. The parks department last year was seventeen dollars and thirteen cents. And this year it's only been six dollars and seventy cents. Which I think really needs to be increased, by the way. Um, and then on the police side of things, if you look at the cost per service call, last year was seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and this year it ends with nine hundred and fifty-four sixty. And then the total cost per capita, uh, last year was three hundred and eighty-two, three hundred and eighty-two dollars. And this year it's, uh, three hundred and forty-eight. So tracking this kind of helps you where we're at, uh, specifically, especially on the money side of things. Uh, nothing really to highlight so much on the streets. We did see some improvement on paved miles assessed to satisfactory. Uh, some of the work that we did, uh, this past year on the roads. And then the cost per capita for streets last year was seventy-nine dollars. This year it's a hundred and thirty-four. So we're seeing we're putting some investments back into our, our roads. You know, I had a lot of stuff to say about the, uh, we're discussing on water rates. Uh, I will tell you that coming back from, uh, Little Rock, uh, Angie was there along with, uh, Luanne. Um, and Danny. Danny, what was the number one thing there? Water is gold. Um, you know, I think we're going to have to start getting the mindset that water is forty-five dollars a month. It's not anymore. I mean, you look at this water line that, um, Fayetteville's building, it's over a hundred million dollars. Um. We're in an area right now that's growing extremely fast and people have to have water to live. Um, and you know, they're asking for more water. Beaver Lake. Um. Beaver Water District's looking at a investment of a billion dollars. I would assume two tons, probably looking at about half of that. Who's going to pay for it? They're going to be billing us, so we got to bill our customers. So I want you guys to think about that as we start about, talk about water rates. Because it's nothing for a household to spend two hundred dollars a month on a cable bill or on phones. But my gosh, if you raise their water rates, my, you would think that it's going to drive, but it's going to happen. I'm just telling you it's going to happen. And so we got to get a mindset on that, especially even sewer. Sewer's another one that's going to be, the plant's getting ready to upgrade. They're going to be throwing the cost onto us. So we need to get a mindset that prices are going to go up. And the public needs to understand that. And what was presented tonight was is that there are ways that we think, and you're going to see this, you see, we still have water loss issues. That's a huge amount of money that could be saved by a system like this. And I know it's a lot of money. But I want you to think about that. I really do. You know, you talked about how much from a metering. We just had, just to give you an idea, because you were talking about uh, rolling a truck, just this past month, they had a hundred and fifty-five meters that didn't read by the truck. Guess what? You guys have to hop in, they got to drive around physically, go read those meters. Time is money. You've got vehicles, you've got all kinds of stuff. So you got to think about this stuff and I'm, hopefully, I'm going to work with James a little bit. We're going to try to come up with some better costs. So you guys understand what benefit this might have, uh, specifically to the system. I really do believe that it will be beneficial. Yeah, Angie.
Well, I was just going to say, uh, we're also having a whole lot of new houses
Yep.
that are being built. And we're going to be having to supply them and we're going to have to be driving by them as well. So we've got to get, do something to where we can take care of the citizens here in Tawny Town effectively.
Yeah. One of the things that we're talking about was putting, he talked about zoning stuff and you could zone and you could actually read that meter and you could try to, you could determine where that leak would be. I mean, yeah, you could hire two guys and, you know, a couple of trucks and for a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars, you're going to go out and do nothing but find water leaks. Is that better to invest in some kind of system that would help these guys really track what's going on into the system? So just a thought. On the water, um, you know, you saw last year our water cost, uh, per thousand was two eighty. We're up to three twenty and James, you know, talked about another increase here. Um, you know, our water loss last year, if you average it out, was twenty-five percent. This year was twenty-seven points two. Um. So the total debt per capita is actually gone up or has gone down. It was thirty-three fifteen per capita. It's down to twenty-five forty-three. Um, looking at capital, you can look at some of these numbers, but basically the water and sewer, if you look at it, if you look at the fund balance, it's about the same it was last year. Um. I am concerned about water and sewer. I'll just be honest with you. When you realize that twenty-five percent of the total revenue for both these departments is coming from sales tax. So sales tax is actually supporting your operating of those two departments. So.
Question, yes. I appreciate hearing that. Uh, earlier when I asked if water was supporting itself, I was told that it was. It sounds like it is not.
Well, when you combine it, it's hard, it's hard to say. I mean, you know, you would have to take the sales tax out and figure out what this is and what this is. It combines it, the revenue altogether, which somewhat confuses whether or not sewer's really losing it or is water gaining it? I mean, it's hard to say because you just kind of throw it together. But that is a big concern of mine, um, from a long-term perspective. Because this is tied to a bond. The bond was, part of the bond was is when you paid for the new fire station. So that bond, that money is taken out to pay that year and then the remainder of that sales tax goes to the water and sewer. So water and sewer really are not paying their way right now. If you look at it. So I want you to think about that as we move forward. I'm just throwing that out to you. I, it is a concern of mine. Um, from a long-term perspective, um, so I'll, I'll shut up.
Comments from citizens? Counsel.
I do have one.
Mike?
Um. I, I wanted to ask you a question, Mark, about, um, the debt ratio per capita. It looks like, uh, that, that number being at seven eighty-nine, which, uh, before was one thousand. I think that's a good number, right?
I believe so.
Okay. And, uh, the. And the percentage of total operational cost per revenue, you said it's down at ninety percent. In, in the past, isn't our goal like eighty-five percent, or is ninety more the goal?
Well, I think, I think what we tried to, are you talking about the general fund?
Yes, in the general, yes.
What I tried to do was is look at it this way. You know, we just, we did a capital improvements plan, and my goal would be that we save enough money. You know, we've got to have enough money to pay for Ryan's brand-new truck. Hopefully, it's the same price. How many trucks are you getting? Three? We have a truck that we got to buy in twenty-twenty-six.
Right.
A million dollars or so. So, but, you know, you save enough money to, in fact, be able to maybe build that new fire station out, you know, out five, six, twelve, four, twelve. We've got to get away from continually borrowing. I mean, that gets you broke. So my encouragement, and you're right, Mike, I think the eighty-five is, is correct. But I do think that we're heading in the right directions. I think as your revenue, especially on the sales tax portion of this thing, as I mentioned, it's, it's really grown well. And we get more businesses in here, it's going to provide that sales tax that, you know, the eighty-five percent will be basically a, a good number that we can hit.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Latham, I appreciate it.
Well, there's no further discussion there. We'll have a discussion of the approval of work orders, one A and one B.
I did want to make a comment. We're only, we're only requesting to approve one A. Okay? This is the second portion of a, an actual contract that the city approved with CK Engineering. The first was the schematic design, which was approved on September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four. That was to do the schematics, that was basically, you know, to do the survey and work, do all the good stuff that needs to be done. The plans are thirty percent complete, so we need to move to the design documents. So we're going to try, we're requesting that that be approved through the A-one. Is it one A, one A? Yep. Anybody have any questions? We're getting close to getting Fletcher started, if we can get the documents together.
Citizens? Counsel? No questions? Yes, I need a motion to approve the resolution.
I make a motion that we move this to the council meeting.
I will second.
Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Next, we have a discussion authorizing the purchase of a used vehicle, excuse me, vehicle for the street department. Mr. Latham? Mr. Scott?
We have in our fixed asset this budget to purchase a vehicle. And Scott has been running around the country trying to find something that he feels will work for him. And let him describe it. It is a used vehicle for thirty-six ninety, thirty-six nine hundred?
This truck is a twenty-twenty F-two-fifty XL package, it is a four-wheel drive. It's a flatbed truck. You know, they're hard to find, that's, and this is a clean, nice truck. It's, it is a twenty-twenty, but it's very low miles. It was a government-owned truck, it was on a lease. This company, Dunn Ford, it's west of Fort Smith, about forty miles. They had several of these, and this is the last one left. The other ones went quicker because they had toolboxes mounted to the top of the bed. This is the only one that didn't, and of course, they're, you know, that's another couple thousand dollars to, to dress the truck up. But anyway, I drove down and looked at it, took a, took a Saturday, and went down, looked at it, and they're holding this truck. It is, it's a, it's a very nice pickup. So anyway, it, it's packaged like we need it to be. It, it's, it does have the snowplow, snowplow package on it, which doesn't mean that there's a snowplow on it, it's just means that it's got a heavy front end, heavy-duty alternator, upliftor switches, all that. So anyway, it's, just ask and get this approved.
What, what are we going to do with this truck, Scott?
It's just another one to go under my department, you know, we, we, we have a two thousand and thirteen truck, it's a heavy truck, it, it's a dump bed. And, you know, it's got over a hundred thousand miles on it, and it, it's still in great shape, but we just, we got to spread it out. We, we got a lot of projects, my team's going to be spread out a little bit here in the next few months, and we just need transportation to get our job done. It's Mark Latham guy, you don't mess around, Manny. He's got me, he's got me stepping and fetching around here, so.
That happens. Well, thanks for doing the, the hard work, thanks for doing the legwork on it. This is already part of the budget for the year, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
So there's really, at least in my opinion, no reason to say no, but here's my concern. I only have one concern, and it's for you. If you need this truck, and it's sitting on somebody's lot, two hours from here, and two weeks away before we vote on it.
We need it, yeah, we, we need to do something about that.
Yeah, and, and I don't know that we can, because unless we have a special meeting between now and whenever. I mean, even a P.O., if we gave them a P.O., we don't really have the authorization to do that at this point, do we? A purchase, a purchase order?
That's a pass question, right?
I, I, I just don't, I don't want to lose the truck. If two weeks from now, we approve it.
I agree.
And then we go two hours down.
We've done before in the past, that if you know you are going to pass it, you can go ahead and give the okay to move forward with it, and then you can vote on it at the council. But you can also do the special meeting on it.
Well, can we not do a special meeting following this meeting if, if we have a quorum?
We have to advertise.
You got to advertise. But you can do it anytime. We can be, be with the, the guidelines of advertising and get it done.
Four hours, we can come back in four hours.
I think, yeah, I think you have to get more than four hours notice.
That's what I heard, it's four hours.
Is it four? I thought it was two.
Four hours notice?
Yes.
It is four hours notice? Then I'll come back in four hours.
And then are they delivering this for us, or are we sending somebody down to grab that?
I'll go get it, me and, me and one of the guys will, will.
Is it a diesel?
No, it's a gas.
Yes.
Yeah, no, it's a gasoline truck.
And Scott, I want to apologize to you, Jamie's been out, this is the second week that she's been out with very, very sick kids. And
Oh, I realize that, no, it's all good.
It was on, I believe it was sent in her email or on her agenda to make a special meeting tonight, and it fell through the cracks, and I apologize.
No, no, no need to apologize.
I, I can make myself available anytime before six tomorrow, if we need to do a special meeting.
Five would be better, I can make myself available as well.
Before five. I, I just don't want you to lose the truck.
At five, five.
Appreciate that, I really do.
Well, that would be my question, is would they be, you know, what would be the chances of them holding it for two more weeks? So a special meeting makes sense.
Special meeting makes sense. Yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to hold this up.
I totally agree. Can you, can you do a special meeting tomorrow?
At five, anybody do five?
We only need four.
My calendar and.
We only need four.
We need four. No, I need four.
Five, one, I can.
I'll have to be remote again.
Well, I mean, we're, we're talking about a five-minute meeting. Now we're down.
Right.
So we could zoom in at ten AM or whatever.
I could do anytime. I mean, we'll have five people.
Well, we, we can't do it at ten, because that's not going to give four hours notice, so.
Fair enough.
We can do it at five o'clock before evening.
I can do five o'clock. Do we need to physically be here, or can we zoom in?
We could zoom.
You can zoom.
Let's do it.
Is that fair? Okay, so we only need, what, two of us to be cool with a special meeting? And we just did, in four for a quorum, so let's do it, we'll see you tomorrow.
Okay, hey, thank you very much.
I make a motion to move this to our special meeting tomorrow.
I'll second that.
Okay, we're going to do this at what time?
Five o'clock tomorrow.
And it's going to be advertised, Mayor?
I'll get it.
You're going to make sure it's done? Okay. And second?
That was me.
Hey.
Roll call.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Absolutely, yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
See y'all tomorrow at five.
It's a twofer, guys.
All right. A discussion of an approval for the fire department to enter automatic aid agreement. Mr. Krug?
Chief Krug.
Front and center.
Yeah, I did, it was good.
So do you guys have any questions about what the automatic aid is for?
Why don't we have one of these in place already?
We do, do we not?
Ask the previous chiefs.
Well, I can't, I mean, I could. All right, fair enough, I'll ask them.
Don't we, don't we have automatic aid with, with other departments?
We do not have any automatic aids.
Really? Excuse me, whoa.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah. Oh, you're going to ask?
Citizens? Counsel?
I'll second it.
I'll make a motion to approve. Amber seconded that.
He moved to council?
Moved to council.
Yeah.
Yes.
Come on, yeah, that's what I mean, sorry, I'm off tonight.
It's a long meeting.
Roll call.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Thanks, Chief.
Next, we have a discussion of an approval to vote in members to the Tawny Town Historical Museum Board. Misty?
Yes, next meeting, the council or the museum board, and Emily will be presenting four new board members to be voted on. Kevin Maestri, Brittany Berry, Chris Taldo, and Billy Morgan. They all been turned in very strong applications of interest, and have been to an event and a meeting to make sure it's right for, fit for everybody. And we're gaining some very valuable knowledge and experience to add to our board, and it will make us a full board of twelve. So they will all be coming to us next meeting to be approved, and, and you can, they're going to introduce themselves, they'll all be here present.
At city council? Citizens? Counsel?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Move to city council. Excuse me?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Misty?
abstain.
Daniel?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
All right. Now, we have comments from, Daniel first.
I just want to say, thanks for everybody for coming out and giving us a positive communication from citizens to this body, and, you know, the discussion amongst us here up on council, thanks for the healthy discussion. And all of our, our guests, Mr. Peacock, thanks for coming up here and informing us on the Neptune products. And I think I look forward to seeing an A.M.I. estimate, if that's the system we're going with versus the A.M.R. Best of luck to Mrs. Black and Mr. Borts on your letters of intent, and I look forward to seeing that discussion at our council.
Mike, are you there?
I am here. First of all, I'll apologize for having to do this by remote means. I notified the mayor my reasons, but I'll let you guys know, I had a medical emergency with my mother, so I had to rush to Forest City. Short term, it's, it's just the flu, long term, there may be some other issues, but there's no need for me to discuss those right now. But I appreciate y'all letting me chime in this way. Made multiple attempts on teams at first, had to listen, I only caught some of the first part of the discussions, I'll have to catch up on some of that. I really have to really catch up myself on the, the meters. But other than that, I guess that's all, I have some other things that I don't want to say, but I, I will, I will say those when I'm in person. And again, thanks for everybody for participating in the audience, if those of you are still here. And I'll see you guys in a couple of weeks, I'll see you remotely again tomorrow. I apologize for that, but it can't be helped.
Misty?
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight and your patience and coming forth and sharing your feelings on things, we appreciate that. I know it's not always easy getting up and talking and publicly in meetings. Thank you, Nana, for always supporting our people. I just want to appreciate you, you do stuff for the police and the fire and the street guys, and it doesn't go unnoticed. I promise you, and we're very thankful to have you in our city. So thank y'all for coming out tonight.
Tim?
You know, tonight's an interesting night, met a lot of levels. And I don't really know what to say about that, but I'm going to keep my, my comments short. I am. I do want to thank in particular Chief Krug, I had a chance to chat with him yesterday, we had a long discussion, and he shared a lot with me yesterday, I appreciate your time, thank you, Chief. And, and Scott, when you praised Nina, Nina, thank you. But that's probably the classiest thing I've seen in this room, thank you. And then you went, and you went out and you found this truck, you found it used, you found a great deal, appreciate that. Thank you for knowing what you needed and going after it, so thank you, thank you all for being here.
Amber?
It's been a long meeting, I do appreciate everybody that came out tonight, and I, that's all I'm going to say, I have no comments.
Well, as Tim said, there was a lot, lot, lot discussed tonight, and, and people wonder what happened, there was a discussion today, and so that's the reason things went on like this tonight. This will not be a norm, I promise you. But that being what it is, I think a lot of things were aired, and you know, I do thank everybody for sharing their opinion. I think it's valuable, and if we have the two people, you know, make it back to planning, I'll be tickled. Be happy, and Nina might address it six, five, seven. So thanks, everybody, for coming out. Mayor?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, thank you guys for coming out, I know that everybody says that, but we do appreciate you guys whenever you come out and are involved in the city. I'm trying my best to do what I think is right for the city, and I'm going to continue to do that. Do want to say that we had an amazing day, one day last week, we had Rollins Elementary School come and do a field trip. It was absolutely awesome, we had, Mr. Artimani got up and spoke, and so did Mr. Latham, Mr. Spurlock. We had the whole group up here, and they were telling everything, James was able to go over everything to do with water. So the kids had a fabulous time, they left here, they got to go to the museum, they got to go to the fire department. Our police was out of pocket, we had some of them, they were in different places, doing testing and other things. So they missed out on the police department last week, but the kids had an absolute blast. So I was really excited to be able to be a part of that. On the Title V meeting, I really hope that everybody will come out. And that meeting, again, is going to be at St. Joseph's Catholic Church, February twenty-seventh, at six o'clock in the evening. It is going to be very important to get this information out about the air permit. We've already had, we're already having issues with A.D.E.Q. and waste management, with the air monitoring and the chemicals in the air, and they, I just really can't stress enough how much I really need everybody out there. And they, I just really can't stress enough how much I really need everybody out there giving your opinions, telling your experiences, what's going on. And, uh, we have to keep Tawny Town safe. We have to keep citizens safe. And I just say, you know, I appreciate you guys and thank you.
Well, seeing as the city attorney has nothing to say, I seek a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Good night, everybody.